Hello all, welcome. I am calling to order this here, this special hearing of the National Board of Education. It is January 30th at 5:04 PM. I'm going to kick this on over to our attorney, Tom Claussen.
Good evening. The first order of business is to determine whether the union wants to have this done in public or non-public. It's the option of the union.
The union elects to have it in public.
Okay. So, the way we'll conduct the hearing is because the union has the ultimate burden of proof, the union will present its case first. The formal rules of evidence don't apply. Typically, what we do, as you know, President Markku, is you put your witnesses on, and if the district wants to question the witnesses, it can. And then if the board members have any questions for the witnesses, they can ask those questions as well. Once you have completed your case, the district will put on its case, and once that's completed, unless there's any rebuttal, we'll close the hearing. Okay? Any questions?
We just need to do roll call first for the board.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Heather, can you, Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call?
Certainly. So, Ms. Lampier is out this evening and has asked me to take over for clerk just for tonight. Ms. Darling?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio?
Here.
And we also have Dr. Andre, Attorney Claussen, Mr. Poska, and the National Teachers Union President, Mr. Markku.
Okay. So, the floor is yours, President Markku.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to extend my thanks to the board and the district for working around my travel schedule the last few weeks. So, I appreciate that effort to make this available for me to be here to present this grievance hearing. I have a brief opening statement, and then I have three witnesses, and then we'll go from there. For years, education experts and professionals have been warning of a teacher shortage. The message is no longer warning us that it's coming. It is here. Nashua is no exception to this shortage. While it may not be as significant as some other cities and towns, we are still feeling the effects in this district. Currently, Nashua cannot fill several teaching positions throughout the district. In some cases, there aren't even any candidates for the position. This has caused problems throughout the district because, while we may be short teachers, we still have students to educate. The union submitted to you three pieces of evidence. Two seem very similar because they are. These two items are the MOU signed by the district and the union relative to a teacher teaching an additional class during their prep. The MOU clearly details who is eligible, what the responsibilities are, the pay the teacher will receive, and how long it will last. In both of the MOUs, the agreement states this agreement is intended to address a specific circumstance and is not intended to establish any past practice between the parties. The union would certainly agree that come last, the last day of school in June, this MOU will expire with no expectation of the practice continuing without a replacement MOU or language negotiated into the contract. In the written, excuse me, in the written responses received, Dr. Andre stated the grievance was being denied and specifically cited the past practice language. The union contends that the district in March 2022 created a past practice that falls outside of the contract language and outside the MOU by paying special education teachers additional compensation when they absorbed additional students from a vacant teaching position. While the district used the formula within the MOU, the district applied that formula in practice to something that falls outside of the scope of the MOU. In her email to special education staff at Main Dunstable Elementary School, Assistant Special Education Director Chelsea Gillis stated, "I know the attached MOU references teaching additional classes, but we are interpreting to relate to additional case management as well." The teachers in this example did not give up their prep period. They did not teach an additional class, but rather absorbed additional students and additional work. The same situation happening currently at Elm Street Middle School involving eighth-grade English teachers. The budget currently has three eighth-grade English teachers for the 2022-2023 school year. One of those teachers transferred to one of the coaching positions in the district, leaving a vacancy. While the district did post the position following their standard protocol, to date, the position remains vacant. The remaining two teachers, Andrea Zona and Jessica Terry, absorbed the third teacher's caseload. They will share in the number of students per class, the inequities it has created, and the lack of acknowledgement and support from administration. We ask you to award retroactive compensation for Mrs. Zona and Ms. Terry using the formula outlined in the MOU, which has been utilized by the district for others in an analogous situation, for each day they had these additional students in their classroom, and for each day moving forward until a third eighth-grade teacher is placed at Elm Street. My first witness is NTU Vice President Gary Hoffman.
Just for clarification of the record, the three documents that you referred to, President Markku, are the ones identified as NTU Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and Exhibit C. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And those are the ones that you provided to the board earlier this, I think, last week?
I have printed copies, if anyone would like those.
Does everybody on the board have copies of these?
They are also sent electronically to both the district and the board.
Okay. Great.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Oh, we need one print copy. Yep.
Adam, I'll take one too, please. Sorry.
Get my steps in.
What?
Get my steps in.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question? The names of the two teachers that were asking for compensation, I didn't catch them, and I wanted to write them down. Does it?
That's Andrea Zona.
Okay.
And Jessica Terry.
Thank you.
I think you're going to be hearing from both of them.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I take adequate notes.
Mr. Hoffman, I think everyone knows who you are, but for the record, could you state your name?
Gary Hoffman.
And how long have you worked for the Nashua School District?
I've been employed with the Nashua School District since August 2003.
And what, could you describe your work history with the district?
So, for the past 20 years, I've mostly taught middle school, seventh and eighth grade. However, I also did teach at the high school level for a year, and I also taught high school, summer school for a number of years as well.
And what is your role with the Nashua Teachers Union?
I'm the vice president, and, you know, I also am the middle school grievance chair. I've served in the board of directors since 2007, and I've been the grievance chair of the middle schools since 2012.
Okay. And as an experienced middle school teacher, what is the typical workload for a team teacher at the middle school level in your experience?
So, it's changed over the years. You know, when I first started teaching in 2003, the numbers were larger. And, you know, at the middle school, for a team teacher, you're typically put on a team with four or five teachers. In the eighth grade, it is, you know, you're put on a team with a, with an English teacher, a social studies teacher, a math teacher, and a science teacher. You know, in recent years, the average size of a team is around 90 to 100, I would say. It's been a little bit lower more recently. When I first started teaching, it was, I think my first year, I did have 115 students. But it was different then. You know, the, you know, back then, I would say maybe 5% of my students were identified, whereas now it's more like 35, 40%. And so, the nature of the students I had back in the days when I taught 110 students, it is a lot different than it is these days.
Okay. And for those who may not be aware, could you share what the team model looks like at the middle school level as it currently exists?
Sure. You know, the middle schools really run on the teams. The content teams, we typically have the same 90 to 100 students, and we work with these students very carefully. We do team PLCs regularly. You know, when a student's struggling, we work together as a team to address those concerns. We work with parents together. We meet with parents together. We plan activities together. We're really, we're really a family. It's kind of a well-oiled machine. It's one of the great things about working in the middle schools.
Okay. And as someone who's worked at the middle school level for almost 20 years, can you describe what issues you as a teacher might have if your caseload were similar to the two Elm Street teachers today?
Well, there's a couple of issues. It's also the time they were added. You know, when students come in to a team, we prepare for them. You know, I actually start coming in in early August, a couple of times a week usually, and I meet with my teammates, and we usually get our schedules probably maybe around August 13th, 14th or so. It's always around my birthday. And we look at our, we look at the students we have, we read the documents. A lot of those students, if they have IEPs or 504s or their ELL, that's our time to really understand who those students are, to understand, to look over those accommodations that they might have. Well, oftentimes, sometimes, parents will bring their kids in a little, a couple of days early, and we'll talk to them, and we'll come up with sort of strategies. We'll even talk to the kids' teachers a little bit last year, strategies on how to build relationships with those students. The big problem that I would have, what happened with Andrea and Jessica, is not only, you know, do they each have well over 120 students, but the students were added three or four weeks into the school year. Now, what I would struggle, besides just the sheer number of students, are a couple of things. You know, our first week or so of working with students, you do a lot of routines, you do a lot of just general policies. You teach the kids how to be in eighth grade. You teach the kids, how for me, how to work in a social studies room, in my social studies room. And doing that beginning-of-the-year work really helps kind of mitigate any potential problems that there might be in the future. You know, the kids know what to do when they walk in my room, where to find things, do all that stuff. Now, if I had 40 or 40 or 45 students come in, three weeks in, that would be a huge challenge. You'd have to almost redo things, and then, of course, the kids already had that. That's going to be a problem. But I think even on top of that, you're probably, you're also going to get a lot of students who are identified, and that's going to take a lot of work to look through their IEPs, look through their 504s, their ELLs, status, because we have monitor reports to do, we have meetings. That's going to put a, if I'm going to do that well, it's going to take an awful lot of time to do it well. And I would make sure I do it, and I know that teachers in Nashua would, but it's going to be stressful.
Do you see any, sorry. Do you see any potential contract issues with things like that?
Yeah, so a few things, you know. First of all, when we look at, you know, teachers get a plan period. You know, if you look at Article 8.3, we have, what the contract says is middle school teachers in the, in, you know, science, social studies, math, and a lot of the core subjects, you have a plan equal to the student's day. Planning periods are used typically for correcting. They're used for planning your lessons, making photocopies, doing those sorts of things. If I had the number of identified students that these, that these two teachers have, that's going to eat into that planning time, so I'm not going to have any planning time to do correcting and lesson planning. I'm going to have to do that after. If also, especially in those first few weeks of having those students, I'm going to have to use my planning time to get to know those kids, learn their stories, and manage that transition. And so, essentially, you're not having that planning period for correcting, for lesson planning, for doing the things, even copying, you know, all that was going to have to happen in your own time. So, that's one issue. But furthermore, you know, we have this MOU from last year. They're clearly receiving an extra class. I think it's, my personal opinion, it's two and a half classes, because, you know, they each got half a, half a teacher's team. And, you know, when we're talking about the past practice, if you look at Exhibit C in the email, March 29th, you know, Chelsea Gillis clearly states, "I know the attached MOU references teaching additional classes, but we are interpreting it to relate to additional case management as well." By stating that, it's clear the district's wanted some flexibility with it. You know, if you look at Exhibit B, it's clear to me that this was going to be used for this year as well. You know, so I certainly think that there's, that there's a solid reason to pay to use this contract language in Andrea and Jessica's situation.
Looking in the contract, do we have specific language in the current collective bargaining agreement related to class size and caseload?
Yeah, if you go to Article 8.4, it does say 31 students a class. You know, you know, I taught at the high school, and my classes there were 30 stu, I typically had 29, 30 students there, but, you know, your high school teachers, because of their schedule, I never had more than 93 students, just because you have three classes, one plan. You can have 31 kids, but, you know, it's, I've never, I've never thought of it being to cap up so high in all the classes. And, you know, this, that, that language is very old. We haven't been having numbers like that in a long time, especially in addition to this, we have kids that are dealing with some of the, some of the issues with COVID still, a lot of that learning loss. And to me, the memorandum of understanding was an acknowledgement that, you know, because there's a teacher shortage, if teachers are going to have to get, to get extra students, they're at least going to acknowledge the extra work they're doing. So, that's what I'd say.
So, the union agrees that there's contract language, but why does this language not apply to this situation?
Well, in this situation, the past practice, in my opinion, would supersede it.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, do you have anything else that you'd like to add that I didn't ask you that's pertinent to this situation?
I know these two women have worked extremely hard. They've given a lot of hours, you know, they, they didn't, they weren't even given like their lunch duties off, like something. I, they have had a lot of stress. I mean, they still don't have the teaching position filled yet. I think this is the right thing to do. That's all.
Right. Hold, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions from the district?
Questions from members of the board? Or Mr. Hoffman? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I think I just have two. Do the teachers have to attend additional team meetings to represent the teacher who wasn't replaced?
Yes, I believe so, and they'll be here, and you can hear their side, yeah.
And you're asking for 14% retroactive?
Correct.
That's it.
Further questions? You're excused.
Thank you.
Next witness, President Markku. Would you just please spell your last names so we all get it?
Yep. It's Zona, Z-O-N-A.
Oh, perfect.
Zone in Italian.
Got it.
So, we know your name, and we've just spelled it. What's, and you work where?
Elm Street Middle School.
And how long have you been at Elm Street?
I think this is my 13th year.
Okay. And have you worked anywhere else in the school district?
In this district? No, I have not.
Yeah, okay. And what do you teach at Elm Street? Hold on, we're going to wait a second.
Hang on one second.
Student teaching doesn't count.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, I've been taking extensive notes.
Okay.
Which you are welcome to see.
Thank you.
Yep.
And what do you do on Elm Street?
I teach English.
You teach English.
And a whole bunch of other things besides teaching English, but primarily, I'm paid for teaching English.
Okay. And at your school, how many eighth-grade teams are there?
Three.
Three, okay. And how many teachers are there for the other core subjects excluding English?
Four, I believe. How many core?
Teachers, so there's math, science, social studies, and English.
Yes.
And of all of the teams, are there three social studies teachers at Elm Street?
Yes.
In eighth grade?
Yes.
And three science teachers?
Yes.
And three math teachers?
Yes.
How many English teachers are there in eighth grade?
Two.
There are two. And can you explain to the board why there are only two English teachers as opposed to the three that were budgeted and planned for?
I believe because at the very last minute, a position change, or the teacher accepted a different position, was offered a different position, and therefore, that team was without an English teacher. But it wasn't before the start of school because we didn't receive those extra students, the 50% more students, until on or about the 24th of September.
Okay. So, there was a teacher, the teacher transferred to another position and left their two English teachers. Okay. And?
Yeah, because they, the students knew who their teacher was. I believe that they had already received, you know, notification in the mail of who their teachers would be, so I do believe it was after the beginning of school, so.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not positive.
And you just told us that it's been September, about September 24th?
Correct.
Do you know, has that position been posted?
I think about three weeks ago was when I saw it for the first time on or about three weeks ago, because I have been looking. Because when I, when I was initially told and asked to help, I, to be honest with you, I was happy to help. It was prefaced that it would be only a couple of weeks, and I care about kids, and I wanted them to have somebody who was highly qualified and not a daily substitute, and I was happy to help. And so, I did look to see if it was posted, and it was not, but I did see it about three weeks ago.
Okay.
Yep.
So, what does your day look like? How many classes do you teach? What is your class makeup of those different classes?
I teach five classes a day, and the makeup, well, my numbers are, I have a class from 24 students to 31 students. So, I have, the student-teacher ratio is 24 to 1, 26 to 1, 26 to 1, and I think, I don't know, and then 31 to 1. So, but the mix in terms of the different learners in the class?
Yes.
So, I have many kids who are ELL, although because I teach English, I have fewer than those than some of the other core subject teachers. But I have a lot of kids with IEPs, a lot of kids with home issues, just all sorts of different needs, learning disabilities and...
So, thinking about your workload, how has this shift, these additional students, impacted that workload from what you've traditionally had?
So, it's 50% more. And while that is a number, and it's a pretty high one, if you consider that it's 42 extra humans that I'm trying to shape and educate, it, it becomes something quite a bit more. So, my day is just more. There are more meetings, emails, there are more recommendations that I'm going to have to be doing. I've done private school recommendations. I have to do more ELL monitor reports. As far as correcting goes, I'm an English teacher, so I have a lot of correcting, which is mostly subjective. It's not multiple choice. It's essays, arguments, and things like that. So, that's pretty intense when it's 50% more. Writing conferences, things like that, you know, aren't happening as much. That's an important piece of teaching writing, is actually getting face-to-face and giving individual attention, because that's what they need, you know, they're individuals, and they need me to, to be able to deal with them on an individual basis. You know, we focus on the whole child, and that, that does matter, and especially since the pandemic, because they are needier, and they have changed. So, that's really important. As far as classroom management, 50% more again is a number, but if you imagine the amount of, of kids, it becomes really sort of challenging, to be honest with you. I think that's probably one of the most challenging pieces, is the, the management issues. And I'm usually sort of pride myself on being a very good classroom manager, but I don't know if it was because they came a month late and I wasn't given an opportunity to get to know them and for them to get to know me as well, or what it was, but it, it's definitely been more difficult. It may be that they're not sure if they're, if I'm really their English teacher, or if there's another one around the horizon, if they're staying, if they're going, but it's like they've been in this sort of transitional state, and I think it creates anxiety for them. So, but, so, and then assessments, guidance issues, I don't know. That's just some that I can remember.
Okay. Thank you. You mentioned the get-to-know-them in them-to-get-to-know-you, and I'm assuming that applies also to getting to know their classmates. Is that an important piece to the teaming model?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, there are certain things. I mean, they're 13- and 14-year-olds, so, you know, they like to learn sort of, but they really especially like to impress their friends. So, getting, when they come in, they need to know what, what's expected, and so I do this. I say, "Holy moly," they say, "Guacamole," and then they're quiet, and then, and that works beautifully. And it's, avoids power struggles, and it's just worked wonderfully for 13 years, but unfortunately for this year, it's not working so well. And I think it is because they weren't there at the initial, you know, those initial few get-to-know-you, get-to-know-me times. So, the classroom management, and I guess if you picture 31 individuals, 13- and 14-year-olds with me, you can, anybody, I think, would be able to imagine that that's very challenging.
Okay. Last question. Is there anything that I didn't ask that is important for the board to know?
Just that, I think, I think that this is about kids, you know? This is about, it's, it's about the kids. It's, it's, it's about them. I'm here for them. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the district?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Any questions from the district? You got to stay.
Just clarification. Were you aware, was the job posted in August, and they were unable to fill at that, at that time? You mentioned that you were unsure of that.
Yeah, I wasn't even looking at that at that point in August. I was preparing for my own 90 students, so I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Yeah, so, just, you know, just making sure. I believe that position was posted in August and wasn't able to be filled at the time.
I only started...
So, I just didn't know if you had noticed or...
No, I only started to look to see if it was posted after I was charged with educating those, you know, extra 40 students.
Excellent. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Could you just tell us a little more about the, why you were led to believe that this would only be for a few weeks? Like, who was the conversation with or?
It was with the principal. Oh my gosh, I just had a brain cramp. I forgot her name. Carrie? I'm sorry. Anyway, but in, in it, the way it was, you know, basically, they, they needed help, and it was obvious, and the students, you know, weren't, aren't going to thrive or learn what they need to learn with daily subs. So, they brought Jessica, Terry, and I into the office and told us, I believe on a, I think it was a Thursday, and told us the need, and we were willing to step up to the plate. And it was, it was put that it would be a few-week solution, and, and we were willing to help, happy to help. help, hap, happy to help, because we both care about kids, so, obviously.
Yep.
So I'll ask this, same question I asked Gary. I've been told by former colleagues that the plan, the team meetings are very time consuming, so are you having to fill in for these additional team meetings?
Right, so, no, because it, there's no time to, because I have my own team meetings that I have to attend. So the only correspondence that I do with the other teammate, one core teachers about students and the student needs is done via email, through emails. You know, and, and that's it, unfortunately, which is, again, not what's best for students, because they need, and even that whole team orientation, they, they need that team, you know, because it's community. And community matters, especially at this age, you know, they're sort of at this transitional age, and they still need nurturing, and they still do need that middle school model, in my opinion, so.
One more follow up. So emails take time.
Yes, they do.
Especially if you're trying to make up for being unable to meet in person, so I would.
They do. They do take time, they take a lot of time.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, and mine actually, thank you for coming and speaking to us today. My question kind of paybacks off of Mr. Claffey's, because I'm, I'm trying to picture how this works as far as the other students. Did you pick up one entire classroom or two entire classrooms of students, or were they integrated into existing classes that you were already teaching? Or both, or something different?
So the way I received them was that they were integrated into my classes. I could tell though, soon after, that they came from a class where they were, they were together. So my assumption, and it is an assumption, is that they just divided certain classes, but I don't know how it was done on that end. I can only speak to how it was received, and they were integrated into my already established classrooms.
Okay, and follow up?
Yep.
So you're teaching, you said, five very full classes of students. Would you have been teaching five full classes of, five classes of students with lower numbers prior to this? Yes, okay. That's where I was getting confused.
I was.
And still one planned period. How does that compare to the other teachers? Does everyone have five classes?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We all have five classes that we teach. It's just that I have 40 more students.
Right.
And my fellow teammates, yes.
Yeah, I'm doing the mental math in my head of dividing that by five. Okay, thank you.
I just, it kind of.
I think Megan was already waiting, but.
Oh, Christina?
Oh, Christina, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Never been called Megan before.
All right.
It's all good. So just a couple of quick questions. If, if this is about the kids, which is what I feel like I heard a lot from both you and Gary, and wanting the kids to have better, pretending for a moment this isn't about compensation, what would you, if you, what would you recommend the district do to fix this moving forward? Because if it's not what's best for the kids, then obviously paying a higher amount, that doesn't fix time or effort moving forward.
True.
So how, what would your solution be?
They need to hire a teacher. I mean, I, I wish I could have a very creative solution, but for their team and for the students to feel like they're part of a team community, they need a teacher to, in order to make that happen, that, that sort of community, that feeling. And, and knowing that they're going to be with that teacher, and that the relationship they make with that teacher, it will be sustained, and it will, it will move, and they'll grow together. I don't have another creative solution to help the students, but they, they do need something more permanent. So anything that would provide permanence and a sense of safety, knowing that they're going to be there for, for an extended period of time, would be a choice that I think would be best for the students.
I absolutely agree.
I wish I could solve the problem.
Me too. Last year, it's one of the only things I think about.
Yep.
Then just a quick follow up. Were you told at any point that you would receive a pay increase for taking on the additional kids by leadership or?
No, to be perfectly honest with you, I have not spoken to leadership about this since that first Thursday that we were told, and the students started that following Monday.
Okay.
So I have not had any correspondence, either verbally or via email, since that time.
Did you say Thursday you found out, Monday you started with them? It's a lot of prep time. I, I absolutely, thank you so much. I commend you guys.
Welcome.
Because I know that this was not easy. I appreciate it.
Thank you for saying thank you. Means a lot.
Ms. Oden?
Thank, thank you.
Spurred a whole lot of other questions. Okay.
The individual you're going to teach with, I guess it was going to be three in the team, took a coaching position. Has she been into, how many, approximately, how many times has she been into your room, and how has she been helpful?
Okay. She has not been in my room once. I do receive emails from her. That is a little bit more work than I had before the email came in, but as far as that, I have not received support.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I think, I'll pass and let Ms., because she, her hand was up before mine, so.
Okay.
I think it's only fair. She's been waiting longer.
Okay.
Me?
Yep, you.
I just have three questions, but they're really kind of quick, I think. First of all, when you were met with on that Thursday to be told that you would be, if you were willing, you would get new students on Monday, was that the only time that you were given any idea of how long this would be and how many students it would entail? And is that, there was nothing like in writing, or it wasn't like, oh, this will only be for one month, or whatever? It was just, we need you now for a period of time? How did that?
Yes, that, that's accurate. It was sort of a, I'm not going to say desperate, but, but it, that's how it was prefaced, that there was a sort of desperate need, it was immediate, no understanding that it would be this long, that it would just be for a few weeks, but that it was important.
Okay, so my second question is, since you received, it looks like somewhere between six to eight additional students in each of your classes. My math is not great, I'm a librarian, but anyway. But I'm sure it increased the class size in every one of your classes. Have you then received, because you have children with IEPs, you have ELL children, you have 504s, have you received extra support help in your classes since you took on these extra students?
So one of the students from the other team came to me with an IEP and with support. So for that one student in that one class, I do have somebody, a special ed educator.
So there's no support in the other four classes that was added after that?
No.
Okay. And then I'm just wondering, how is it going to be if we're not able to hire someone in the next two or three weeks? And sadly, for some horrible reason, you end up teaching these children the entire year. Are you going to be able to do that? Can you sustain it? I mean, you sound like you're a real seasoned, great educator, but I mean, we're only half, we're not even quite halfway through the school year, so I'm just wondering how you feel about that.
Well, thank you for that. I, we do what we have to do. I mean, I, I, I care about the kids, and I'm not going to just stop caring about the kids. I've gotten to know them quite well now, because three weeks turned into on or around four months, so I know them quite well. I will continue to do what's right by them, just as I have continued to do for the past four months.
Thank you. That's, that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I needed to hear from you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, a lot of my questions were just stolen from me.
That's right. I mean, she's, I don't know, she's starting to think like ma'am, starting to think like her. So what was your class sizes, let's go back to that, prior to these additional students coming in? What were the class sizes?
I don't know exactly what they were. I know I had.
Approximately.
Approximately like, like on or about 88 students on Team 82. So I started, so, and, and they were all, you know, much smaller classes, but like in one of my classes, you know, I have four additional students. In another class, almost half of them came from the other team. So it wasn't really evenly distributed. I feel like I lost track of the question.
Okay, so when you, when you, when you're, when you started school in September, so we're five months into it, almost half, we're about halfway into the school year, because February starts in, on month number six, basically. And if, those first three classes, how, how many students did you have prior to the additional students coming in? Do you remember that?
If, if, if I could have something to do math with, because I don't do it in my head very well.
Don't feel bad, I don't either.
Thank you.
We all need that on our phones now.
There were about 17. I mean, some were smaller than that, some were bigger than that, but in general, it was 20 or fewer.
Okay, so we round off each class 20, okay?
Well, that's, that's a little high, because 20, because 20 times five is 100, and we had about, I had about 88 students.
88 students.
Maybe a little lower of a number.
Okay.
It was quite a jump.
So, so what did you say, about 18 students? Yeah. So and then you had about an additional eight students in each class after that? Did you say maybe?
That was my poor math.
And I'm going to divide 42 by five. Can somebody do that? Sure.
What's the?
About eight-ish, eight and a half.
Eight and a smidge, you know.
Okay, so we can't do a smidge, so we did about 25 kids now, 25 students in, in the class. So you, we're saying about, rounding it to about 17, give or take, okay?
So I have, I don't have a class of 25, I have two classes of 24, I believe, one with 26 and one with 31.
Okay, one with 31, okay.
20, oh yeah, that is. You must be pleased I don't teach math. I am. Okay, so, thank you for this. Where am I looking? Okay, yep, so I have, that's actually changed, it's 31 now. I have one class of 25.
Okay.
One class with 23 students now.
Okay.
One class of 31.
Okay.
I just recently got a new student, and another class of 24.
24.
And then 24.
Okay. So one class is really a larger class, and every, all the other classes are within the class sizes, is that it?
In my opinion, they're all large. 24 even is, is kind of a large student ratio, one to 24. But, but one to 31 is very, very large, too large.
Right. And Ms. Oden asked about coaching. What did you need in coaching for the students with you? What kind of coaching would you need? Where she left to become a coach? Would you expect her to check in to see how her students were doing from the class at the beginning? I'm just kind of building off of what Ms. Oden said about coaching. She left to be a coach.
Yeah, I, I don't really, I can't really answer that. I guess I didn't have much expectation in, in, in that position. Typically, the coach joins our professional learning communities and helps facilitate discussion, having to do with data, having to do with, you know, what worked really well, what lesson worked, what lesson didn't work, where we share ideas and learn from one another, and typically that person is part of that. And that we, that is no longer happening.
And if the students would have to remain to the end of the year, because we could not find another teacher, because a question, it was mentioned here, being permanent and a sense of safety, and I'm sure there's a sense of safety in the classroom, I would never even doubt that. They would still have that sense of being permanent in the classroom, because I'm sure you love them and welcome them every day. Am I correct?
Yes, I, I, I think for them, knowing that, I think would decrease their anxiety, knowing whether they're with me or whether there's another teacher for sure, I don't think they should be told too early.
Right.
Because I think that in itself creates some separation, they've developed a relationship. But if what you're asking ultimately is if those students become my students, will I do my best to treat them well and educate them well and care for them to the best of my ability? Absolutely.
And I know you would. And one other thing is, if they do get a teacher, I'm sure you'll help transition them in with the new teacher, and to make them feel just as welcome in another classroom.
Absolutely, during our PLC time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
So I just want to clarify the record before we move off of this. Started with five classes, 88 students. Currently have five classes, 127 students.
So I have got, I actually have an initial student.
That sounds about right.
On or about that.
The, the problem of, the ebbing and flowing of students, there, there, we have some transition of.
Sure.
Children in and children out, so.
Yeah, sure.
Our numbers are only as good as the day that they're printed.
Understood, but including the student who just came in, I got you at 127 students with five classes today, so that sound about right?
About right, yeah. I've had two new students join our team since I gave you this data, so.
Okay.
Yes, that's on or about that.
All right, good.
Yep.
So if these kids were to become yours permanently, would you expect this percentage agreed on the MOU to, like, continue moving forward, or would you be looking at it for just retroactively?
Do you mean what I want to be paid for the work I've done and the work that I'll be doing in the future?
I mean, as a former LNA, it sounds like such a common sense question, yes, yes, you want to get paid for the work.
Yes, because I'm, I'm doing 50% more work.
Would, I just kind of wanted to ask, like, would that change the teacher's contract with like the salary? How, how does that work from a policy standpoint on our end?
It's not a question for this witness, I don't believe, unless you have an opinion on it.
On, can you ask the question again?
I don't, I don't think it's an appropriate question for you.
I don't have a, yeah, it wasn't a question so much for you as it was for the people on this side, but you have a good opinion anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, Ms. Bishop?
With the, with the increase in the work, with having the additional students, and having been a kid who was in a military family, I know what it's like to go in and out of classrooms quite quickly. When you asked for help from leadership and from administration, what did they provide you with to help bring these kids into your classroom? And what kind of help did you ask for?
I didn't ask for help.
At what point, because it's, obviously you went from a planned amount of kids with planning time, and you were ready for them to come in. At a certain point, it went from being manageable to being not as manageable. What happened in that moment where it went from manageable to unmanageable?
I think that, I think we call it the honeymoon period, so to speak. So initially. So initially, managing it was easier. It wasn't really until we started doing, you know, more curriculum, more rigor, where it started to, and the kids, I think, started realizing, oh, we really do have to work, she's serious about this whole learning stuff, where some of the behaviors started coming out. So I can't say specifically when it was. I think it's been a very like slow chipping away, where, you know, you have a cup and it's filled, and you give, and you give, and you give, and, and I don't want to make this about me too much, but it would have been, I didn't ask for somebody to say thank you. And maybe that's on me, but it really would have been nice for somebody to acknowledge our extra work. And I do think that that had a sort of taking out of, away from the energy pool that I have, where I'm, you know, giving and giving and not much is coming in. So in addition to the kids just not knowing if I'm their real English teacher and the increase in behaviors, plus it's January and it's winter, and there's all sorts of different factors that come into play, and it's really hard to pinpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do say thank you, and I don't know if there's a thank you big enough for teachers with all that you do. I want to quickly clarify, because I know that the additional funding for picking up different classes was an MOU from last year. What is the current contract language for class size and team size?
The current.
I was writing notes.
Contract language, I will have to look up and quote, so I don't get them wrong. At the secondary level, is a maximum of 31 pupils per subject class. And there is a cap somewhere, and at the secondary, so I'm in Article 84D, number 3, is the 31 pupils language. And then in 84E, is where that no teacher shall have a teaching load in excess of 150 students per grading cycle.
Okay, per grading cycle. And then, I mean, if we end up in a situation where we have, I mean, obviously, we can't because we have contract language where we can't have more than 31 students, we can't have more than, would you say 150? What, I mean, we would have to shuffle kids around if we had classes that were too big. What supports are currently in the schools to help manage classroom sizes that are over 31? What would happen to those kids?
Well, if we have overage of the 31, there is archaic antiquated language about an overage formula for compensation for that teacher. Some supports have varied from parent educator support, which, you know, we're dealing with vacancies in those. Some have been special educator supports, and we're significantly short in those. So those are the typical things. If there's outside the box creative like ideas, like, we happen, happy to sit down and discuss those options at a school level, at district level. But those are the typical supports that we've had in place before.
Okay. Are there any students in any of the five classes that you're teaching that need to have that extra support, where it's special education or a parent that's supposed to be with the student that doesn't currently have the extra hands-on support that they're supposed to have because of a 504 or an IEP?
Yes.
You have students that need one-on-ones that don't have them?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know like how many?
No.
No, okay. That's challenging.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, really? Okay.
I want to ask a follow-up that goes way back. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. Your teammates, your first team, their, their numbers are what your numbers were before you took care of these other students, correct?
Correct.
And you've been very, I think, gracious and not expressing resentment at the fact that you're teaching 50% more kids, and I hate to throw a math question, but they're teaching 1/3 less than you are, your teammates. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
1/3 less? That's it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Last one, and then we'll let you get out of the hot seat. Thank you for your patience with us. So, Mr. Claffey, like, you just, my brain starts working when you, when you ask questions every time. So there are currently, there are supposed to be three teams, but there's only two English teachers. What's going on with the other English teacher in 8th grade? Did that person also take on additional students?
Hear from her.
They're both, why did I? I'm sorry. Is there also, I'm sorry. I thought someone said something about math earlier.
No.
No, okay.
No, that was a comparison, that the math, social studies, and science teachers have three, and the English department has two.
Thank you. I just, I thought we were hearing from a math teacher and an English teacher, and I was getting very confused with this, so.
I apologize if we were unclear.
Okay. What was it that you were going to say before we started to move on? Yes, you.
Regarding what?
When Zona had mentioned that, yes, it was correct, you had looked like you were about to say something. I was just curious.
I'm not sure.
Never mind.
Sorry.
Okay, all set?
And you know I have a lot to say.
All right, let's have our, thank you very much, Ms. Zona. Let's have our next witness, please.
Thank you.
We'll call Jessica Terry. She's the other 8th grade English teacher at Elm Street.
Jessica T-E-R-R-Y?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and where do you work, Ms. Terry?
I work at Elm Street Middle School.
And how long have you been teaching at Elm Street?
This is my 16th year at Elm Street.
And have, have you worked in the Nashville School District that whole time?
Yes.
And it's all been on Elm Street?
Yes.
And we've already established that you're an English teacher?
Correct.
And we've established that there are three 8th grade teams, and we've established that there are only two English teachers, and there are three science, social studies and science teachers each for those grades. So we've established a lot of the information already, so we're going to do the speed round with you. Talk about your day. What does that look like? What is your class makeup? What is the breakdown for you?
All right, so I currently have 120 students right now. At one point, I had 126, but I think, as was mentioned before, there is a lot of ebb and flow with kids coming in and going out. My class sizes vary from 22 to 26, and I'm very thankful I do not have a class of 31 like Ms. Zona mentioned.
Talk right into the mic or it doesn't pick it up.
Okay. I have 12 students on 504s. I have 18 students on IEPs. I currently have five ELL students, but I would like to mention that all of September through November, I had two sweet young ladies who just moved to the country that spoke no English at all. But they were sweethearts, I loved having them. My, my class, I have one class that has 11 identified students between 504s, IEPs, and ELLs. Another class with nine identified students. I also have 15 discharged ELL students that require monitor reports to be filled out. Is that quarterly, every other month?
Yeah, trimester, every half trimester.
And then, coming up, we'll be doing recommendations for high school classes. So I'll be doing that for my 120 students as well. And I've done a number of Bishop Gerton recommendations that have to be filled out. And those are pretty personal, too. I have to answer a lot of questions specific to each student.
Mr., could you speak more on the high school class recommendations? What does that entail for the 8th grade English department?
Yeah, so I feel like it's going to be even trickier this year than in the past because in past years, our classes have been leveled. So we kind of use that as a baseline for what to recommend them to go to. This year's, our classes don't have any levels. So we've kind of been guessing, you know, is this a foundations class? Is this an extensions class? Is this an honors class? We have to use test scores. And then we have to go into X2, and we have to recommend each student to go into foundations, extensions, or honors at the high school level.
Okay, and so we've heard you share your class numbers and the makeup of those classes. How does all of that, how has that impacted your workload?
So there's a lot more grading to be done. As Ms. Zona mentioned, we're English teachers, so we're not doing a lot of multiple choice type work. They're writing essays and paragraphs, and we're correcting for grammar and spelling. Classroom management has been very demanding with such large groups. There's more meetings. We, I think this was brought up about if we do those team meetings. And while we don't have time to meet with the other teams for team meetings, we do try to attend IEP and 504 meetings when possible. I had to turn down a meeting for this coming Wednesday because during one of my planned periods, I have a meeting for one of my 8-3 students. And my other planned period would have been a meeting for one of the 8-1 students, and that would leave me with no planned period. So I'm not able to attend one of those.
And just to clarify, that's the name of the teams? 8-1, 8-2, and 8-3 are the three different teams at Elm Street?
There was a huge transition period as well when we discovered that, or when we were told we were going to be bringing in these extra kids. I essentially had to erase all of my plans from my plan book and start over to bring those kids in. We spend a lot of time at the beginning of the school year establishing classroom routines, but not just that, like getting to know our kids. And we do a lot of SEL-type activities. And just when we were getting ready to start into the, like, nitty-gritty curriculum work is when we were told that we were going to be bringing these kids into our classrooms. So I didn't think it would be appropriate to just jump right into curriculum. So I kind of started the school year over again. I went over all the classroom routines. I came up with some new get-to-know-you activities without trying to be repetitive. Currently taking, or I just finished taking a grad class about positive classroom environments and learning your kids' names is key, which, as I get older, gets harder. So I made like the biggest effort to learn the kids' names as quickly as possible this year. And like week three or four of school, I started over again with my new 45 students learning all their names. So that was a lot. Coordination and communication between two teams is tricky with planning celebratory You know, we talked about meetings. Sometimes I'm running down the hallway to chit-chat with the other team because they're not in our hallway, to ask about a particular student, to see if they're having struggles in the math class. There's a lot of additional emailing with parent contact. And you might not think about this, but the photocopiers run very slowly. So when you're photocopying for 130 copies about, it takes a lot longer.
Is there anything that I have not asked you that you think is important for the board to know?
It was brought up earlier, if we were, you know, led to believe that they were going to hire another teacher. And while Ms. Sherrett hadn't said anything to me about hiring a new teacher, there is another administrator at our school, Mr. Hubner, who liked to visit our hallway and chit-chat with us about filling that position. And he would talk to us about his interviews, and he would bring interviewees by my classroom, and he would let them sit in on my classes, essentially begging them to come work for us. And at times, he would say, you know, I think we're going to have a new teacher by the first week of December. And in my mind, I would like set that, like, okay, maybe I'll be able to take like a breath come the first week of December. And then he said, you know, they have to finish, they're graduating, we have to wait until January. So come January, we're going to have a new teacher. So I said, okay, that's fine. After Christmas break, we got this. But then it was delayed again for whatever reason. So I, I just feel like, I think somebody had mentioned this earlier, if they just told us, these are your kids from here on out, maybe that would be less topsy-turvy. And aside from that, the strain of all of it, I think it's important to note, it's, this is not best practice. This is not what's best for the students. The district knows that, they have to know that. With this many students, there's less of me to go around. The grading takes longer, so their feedback is not as immediate on assignments. Classroom management is impacted. That takes away from student learning. These students who are divided amongst the teams, that kind of takes away from community and continuity. But I know for myself and Mrs. Zona that we work every day so that our students see none of that, none of the behind-the-scenes stuff. They just know that they're my kid, they're my student, they're in my class, and I'm going to teach them.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. Questions from the administration? Questions from the members of the board? Yes?
Me?
Yep, go ahead.
I'm going to ask the same question that I asked Ms. Zona. And when you received these additional students, many of whom had IEPs or 504s or were ELL students, did you receive additional classroom support to help you while you have those students in your class?
No, I did not.
Thank you.
Yep.
First of all, thank you so much for everything you've done. I think that we often forget that it wasn't just kids that have suffered the last few years, and it's not just kids that need to be resilient now. A lot of adults are still, I'm still trying to put myself back together. So I get it, I see you, and I just, I really appreciate what you've been doing for these kids. Two quick questions. Were you ever told there'd be compensation for doing the additional work?
No.
And when did you first go to leadership to ask for help?
I never went to leadership. I went to my union. We started this grievance process in October because I felt like there was an inequity happening, and the union thought that it was worth pursuing.
Follow-up, did, why did you not go to leadership? Why, why the union first, if you don't mind me asking?
Leadership at Elm Street is not strong this year. Our principal, we don't see her out of her office very often, and I also I also think a little bit with educators, we're not used to being supported by administration. So, and I know from experience that the union has my back, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Claffey?
Follow-up. Thank you.
Put your mic down.
And maybe this is a question for Dr. Andre. If, or maybe Adam can help. If a teacher has a question and wants an answer about compensation, who should that teacher turn to?
Well, I don't know that that's really a question for Dr. Andre. I mean, you can, I mean, HR, leadership, the union, any one of those are appropriate.
Well, I guess, is it appropriate to go to a principal to ask them about compensation? Was that a no, or?
Oh, I don't, maybe that's a good place to start, but I don't think that's the be-all and end-all. You'd end up, you'd end up going to HR eventually, I would think.
So, did you consider, did you ever consider asking your school's leadership about compensation?
It was never about compensation when I went to the union to begin with. When I first went to the union, I was honestly more concerned with the fact that I was taking on another teacher's job or part of their, their job. And, and I thought, you know, before I got those extra students, I kind of looked at it this way. I have, in our school, we can, like, teachers can sub in other classes. Like, I can go sub a gym class tomorrow and make 26 bucks. So I just kind of said, "Aren't I essentially doing that for an entire half a class load of a team? I'm filling in for that teacher." So I don't, I went to the union to ask what could be done. I wasn't going to go to HR and ask for a raise. Yeah.
So, my last one, I swear, just a follow-up.
That's okay.
Well, this is, so I heard, I heard something earlier that was troubling. Would you have felt comfortable speaking with your school's administration about this?
No.
Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you, and thank you. How often do you have PLCs?
We have two different PLCs in my building. We have team PLCs that meet twice a week, and we have department PLCs that also meet twice a week.
And how long are PLCs?
An entire class period, an entire.
And that's how long?
50 minutes on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and 48 minutes on a Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Terry, leave quick. So, no more questions. Thank you very much.
Well, we have no further witnesses, Mr. Clausen.
Great. So the administration would go ahead and present its case?
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. I also want to thank Ms. Zona and Ms. Terry for testifying tonight. I know how difficult it is to testify in front of everyone, so I wanted to limit my questions to you because unfortunately, I think you're stuck in the middle here. So again, I appreciate all the work that you have done for the district in your testimony tonight. I also want to acknowledge that the district has been very fortunate to have low class sizes throughout the entire district, K through 12, over the last couple of years. And then we are experiencing a teacher shortage. But I want to go back to the language of the grievance. You know, there is a significant difference between the students and the caseloads of Ms. Zona and Ms. Terry compared with her, with their teammates, which is true. And as Mr. Markku and Mr. Hoffman testified, the contract says in 8.4 teacher load class size, and we haven't argued this, in 8.4 C1, no teacher shall be required to have more than five periods of class instruction per day and no more four different class preparations per marking period. The admin did not violate this clause, and that's not in question. Furthermore, 8.4 D3, secondary-level teachers shall be limited to a maximum of 31 pupils per subject class. Again, the administration did not violate the contractual language here. And I provide the BOE and the union on Friday, another exhibits. So other class sizes in Elm Street, I just want to point out, in our music department on page six and page 34, you will see similar class sizes and hovering around 24 to 28 students. Same thing with our art teachers on pages 19 and 45. Tech ed classes hover around the mid-20s. Family consumer science teachers on page 31 hover around 25 to 27 students. Health educators on page 44 hover in the mid-20s. And our computer teachers on page 51 is also in the mid-20s. Ms. Raymond, I can give you a copy.
Definitely didn't get that.
Okay.
Did it come from Ms.?
It came from Ms. Cancela.
Came from Ms. Cancela?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then maybe I do have it. Hold on.
Yep. So along those lines, so we can see, again, I don't want to go through reading off the numbers, but there are other teachers within the building that have similar class sizes as Ms. Zona and Ms. Terry. Again, on the teams, there are much lower class sizes, but there are other teachers within the same bargaining unit that have the same class size with the same population of students. Furthermore, along the lines of past practice, again, the interpretation of Ms. Gillis's email. Ms. Gillis's email clearly states that she's operating under the guidance of the MOU. Prior to this MOU and the actions by Ms. Gillis, special educators do not, have not been compensated for taking on additional classes, case management responsibilities. So therefore, any compensation last year was under the guidance of this MOU. Furthermore, as you can see in the email, Ms. Gillis explicitly references the MOU. Therefore, as stated in the MOU, any action as a result of the MOU does not establish past practice, as argued early this evening. Furthermore, along the lines of past practice, and I have a copy, again, it was in your packet, but I'll give you a hard copy because it printed out wrong. Can you give Mr. Markku a copy as well? He was arguing that the district is clear in its intent to continue the practices of the MOU. What you have coming around right now is a teacher who resigned from South in October. In the current practice of the, of the district, and it has been for a number of years, is that for the most part, a teacher's class is dispersed to other periods. As you can see in the last Ms. Boshia's schedule teaching three, you can see in the notes, her period three class was combined with a health class that kept the student population under 31. So she had less than 31 students prior to this, this teacher resignation. The teacher resigned, the students were dispersed, her class load went up to 31, there was no additional compensation. That has been the past practice of, of the district. You can see in the other two periods that is following the intent of the MOU, that two other teachers picked up an additional class period and they're being compensated for giving up their planned period in lieu of another teaching period, and that's a line of the MOU. So if we're arguing the intent of the MOU and the past practice of the district, it's clearly evident, especially at the secondary, secondary level, that the students are either dispersed or a teacher is picking up the other, giving up a planned period in, in exchange for compensation. Which is also the past practice at the secondary level, which is, again, is not seen, is that we have unfilled positions or teachers resigning in August. And I give great kudos to our school counselors where if we have a, a teacher who has a number of classes already planned and scheduled and budgeted for, and the teacher resigns, our guidance councils are working behind the scenes to move those students into other classrooms in August and September. That has been the past practice of the district as long as we do not violate 8.4, the teacher load or the class size, making sure that the, the sections are not over 31 and it's not additional prep. That's the past practice of the district. What happened in Ms. Gillis's case is a one-time example, which I don't think, again, constitutes any type of past practice. It's within the MOU. And if we are going to argue past practice, the best examples are at the high school, which has been going on for a number of years, of dispersing students to other sections and ensuring that it's below the contractual class size and not an additional prep. So that's the district's case. I think it's pretty, you know, there hasn't been a contractual violation. Again, I want to credit Ms. Zona and Ms. Terry for really all that they did over the course of their first semester, just for the BOE's knowledge. There is a teacher scheduled to start 2-6 at Elm Street in that position.
President Markku? Questions?
Do, do we currently have administrator vacancies? District-wide?
Yes.
Are the people covering those positions being compensated for their time?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Yes? Mr. Claffey?
Dr. Andre, this document with the health students, was this semester one or is this for semester two?
That started in semester one.
So roughly, how long were these teachers given, these additional students?
Since, right around October. So from, so this teacher resigned in October. I don't know the exact date.
I guess, and my last question is, I have good friends who are health and gym teachers, but to equate what English teachers do, I mean, to the last time I checked, there's no health state assessment, correct?
That's correct.
So I just think it's, I would be insulted if I was an English teacher and I'm being compared to, and I, I don't disparage culinary arts, but those aren't core, those subjects aren't tested at the state level. So to equate those other classes that are big with English teachers that really should have a cap, that do 10 times more work because it's essential that they do that, I just find that insulting to them, so.
Question, question, Mr. Claffey? Was that a question?
I did. Sorry.
If, Mr. Clausen, if I may respond?
I don't know that there was a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think there's an aspect of.
I'll rephrase it. Do you think it's fair to equate those other subjects with over, with large classes to middle school English? Do you think that's a fair analogy?
I believe every educator in our district, no matter if they're teaching physical education, family consumer science, AP English, come in and work diligently. We have professionals in every single position, and I think they should be recognized for all the hard work that they do, no matter if they're an English teacher, a math teacher, a physics teacher. It is, they are all educators and should be recognized for whatever position they are in. And we do not separate that by contract to say one position is compensated more than another.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I guess as a former teacher, I look at this as really troubling. So I, I would like to ask, was there any thought before you took a classroom teacher and moved them into another position? Was there any thought to making sure that position was filled before you moved the teacher out and left those two teachers by themselves?
So it wasn't the best transition. We were hoping that we had a candidate who was coming in and we made the transition. In hindsight, we should have waited. We did that in a similar, where there was another instructional coach who was thinking about leaving, and we would say, we said that we would backfill that before the transition would be made.
Can I make a comment?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
I just have a question regarding the past practice with Ms. Gillis's, the people. Was that, did that seem to be completely under the MOU? And did, was that supported by our administrators when it happened?
So yes, it was under the guidance of the MOU.
Okay, because it, it seems like a different kind of situation. It's hard for me to compare that to this, but I'm just, that's just me. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah, along, along those lines. Can you help me understand and draw the line between the email from the main Dunstable, Ms. Gillis, in regards to the caseload, the caseworker load and how it, like, what is that straight line from the elementary school prince, or elementary school person's email to middle school English classes? And why does the concern continue to exist after the MOU has expired?
I'm not sure there was a straight line. I don't know the, the connection to it. Again, more of the past practice does more along the straight line to the example of the Elm Street is the secondary practice of either absorbing classrooms or moving students into different sections along those lines. So I don't, I don't see a direct line between the special education email in this case.
I have one more question. Where it's, it's absolutely no question how hard teachers work and what, what is going on on their plates and in regards to the children that are coming into their classrooms, the backgrounds that they're coming with, the energy levels, the enthusiasm, the desire to learn. Teachers obviously are working exponentially harder than a lot of other people in regards to getting our youngsters ready for adulthood. Why do we still have a teacher contract that says that they can have 31 kids in a class if we're seeing that this isn't the best practice for students?
That's, it's a contract, like, we have a negotiated contract.
Okay. I'm just, this has obviously been an issue that's been present for a long time, so I'm just surprised we still have those same numbers.
Okay. Any further questions from members of the board? Yes?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Andre, for taking my question. And this is a statistics question, and you may not have the data right in front of you, but I'm curious about the number of teacher vacancies we have and long-term sub-vacancies we have at the current moment.
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, any rebuttal from the union?
Can I make a clarifying statement?
Absolutely.
The union does not object to the instructional coaching positions. I want to, it, it may have come across that we had a problem as a union with the instructional coaching positions we currently have. They have value in our district, and I've made this comment to Dr. Andre, Dr. Sarfati, maybe Mr. Pasca, that those positions are important, but if we don't have classroom teachers to instruct, then we don't need coaching positions without the classroom teachers. So I want to make it clear to our coaches that we find value in what they bring to our district, and they're important, you know, bringing the curriculum together within the district.
Okay. Does that raise any further responses, questions, concerns?
No, just for, again, the clarification on the hiring of the instructional coach that was made during the summer. Again, it didn't help in the transition of, again, we should have backfilled, but that person was appointed to the position in July and August, so it wasn't September 1st or thereafter.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes?
I just have one question based on what Dr. Andre just said. So if this person, the coach position, was filled in, in August, but yet this English teacher taught the first few weeks of school. taught the first few weeks of school at Elm Street, or did they not? Was there a long-term sub? Who was teaching these students?
Yeah, so I don't know. It was kind of lost in the testimony. Through the first couple of weeks of school, it was a day-to-day sub. And so this was a solution where the students would have a permanent teacher, so that, again, it wasn't a guessing game of who my ELA teacher is. So again, Ms. Zona and Ms. Terry were the teacher of record and have been doing a great job with those students and making them feel comfortable.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'm going to declare the hearing closed. At this point, I'm going to excuse everybody for a very brief non-meeting with legal counsel. We're going to figure out what the next steps are going to be, and then I'll be right out to let everybody know.
Okay. We're back in session. I will, Attorney Clausen, it's your show.
So thank you for the brief break. The board is not going to deliberate tonight. The board is going to deliberate one week from tonight, and we'll have the written decision in accordance with the terms of collective bargaining agreement, so.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the special, this hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
So Ms. Darling made the motion to adjourn, and Ms. Gilio seconded. Do we, it was an attorney meeting, it wasn't non-public? Okay, so all those in favor of adjourning this hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The hearing is now over. It is 7:00, 6:46 PM.